With our last fight staff in the future, thank you.
I'd like to voice the concerns of our members with the district to what should be done and must be done to ensure the safety and fears of our members at work. I was made aware of some comments about CSEA that we were just looking for reasons not to come to work. I would like to remind everyone that CSEA members have been on the front lines since this pandemic began. And that goes to our food service, grounds, custodial, and so forth. Concerns. Notification, no one was informed about a member testing positive at their work site to allow members to take every measure to protect themselves and their families. Enforcement. We've been told that the district is following Fresno County guidelines. But at many sites, there are no masks, no plexiglass. The public is entering the premises without masks is happening a lot. We need guidelines to be enforced. To the member that brought her concerns to the attention of CSEA, we stand by 100% moving forward. I would like to thank, I would like to ask the board to help us in enforcing these concerns and being able to deal with them to ensure that our members, when they go to work, feel safe and are able to return home and also let their families know that they're safe. Please help us with these concerns. Uh, one more thing, there's been some issues as far as communication. I think our vice president has touched on that. We are not saying that CSEA does not want to work with the district. But we continually face problems of old and it seems like we're continually facing as we move forward. We presented ourselves as an entity willing to work with the district, but that has not been what we interpret as the district's intentions with us. Please, we are, since I began, and I said this in a comment, since I began my term as president of CSEA, I think that's what we've tried to do is close the gap between the district and the relationship with CSEA. I assure you, standing here before you, that we will continue to do that. But there is an expectation on CSEA's part that the district be willing to do the same. Thank you.
As soon as the shutdown occurred, that next week, um, all of the districts around us really started to rally in communication on a variety of topics. And first I have to thank Christine Christensen, who's our lead nurse, who is an incredibly intelligent, um, passionate person for our district. And she has been kind of on the front lines with the discussions around all of the surrounding districts on health and wellness during this time. Um, something that came out very quickly right after the shutdown was there was an OSHA manual that was produced in March specific to COVID-19. So there's a 39-page document from OSHA on guidelines for businesses around COVID-19, talking about things like exposure and notification and things like that. Some of the other agencies that we have looked at very closely over this time, of course, are the guidelines from the Center for Disease Control, California Department of Health, and then Fresno County Department of Health as our county and our community kind of entered different phases. So, as it's been said already in the beginning, things were changing almost daily. Uh, but something that was, became very clear very quickly from Center for Disease Control was their definition of close contact with an individual that may have COVID-19. So, one of the documents that we are producing, and you see several of the documents around the room, around social distancing and preventative measures such as hand washing and things like that. Something that is going to be very important for our employees is to understand the CDC's definition of what close contact really is. Unfortunately, it's a pretty high threshold. And this flyer here is basically the definition of close contact, which CDC, and I use the most recent, um, date, the May 29th date. But this definition has been CDC's date for several months now. And it is within six feet of an infected person. So actually, a person that has tested positive, not the relative of a person that's tested positive, it has to be the person that has a positive case. You have to be within six feet of that person for at least 15 continuous minutes. It doesn't really say whether a mask, if a mask is used, then it's okay to be closer than six feet, or the masks were not really something that CDC has said is enough to say, okay, I can be within six feet of that person for more than 15 minutes and not be a risk. It's low risk, but there's still risk. So this flyer here is what supervisors will use when they're doing, um, self-certification conversation with their employees. So, for several months again, um, employees have had to self-certify that, um, they did not have any symptoms that could be linked to COVID-19, um, which included things like a fever, um, worsening symptoms like runny nose, shortness of breath, um, cough, some of those primary factors. And then most recently, the temporary loss of smell and taste, those have been recently added. So when employees come to work, they need to self-certify with their supervisor that they do not have any of those symptoms. If they report that they have one of those symptoms before they get to their workstation, that has been the goal, then the supervisor, um, requests that they immediately go home. And then based on their symptoms, uh, a decision is made whether they need to self-quarantine or self-isolate. Talk about that in a second. This document here is the supervisor, so Sanger Unified Supervisors. If an employee reports to their supervisor that they may have symptoms, then the supervisor will do these five things. They will provide the employee with the stay-home guidelines, will email those guidelines to them. And then of course, will stress the need to follow those guidelines. Um, secondly, the employee, we would like the employee to share their symptoms, their date of birth, and contact number. And why we're asking for those things is because our health staff are then communicating with the Department of Health, who is communicating with the individual. So that's why those three things specifically are being asked for. The next question is, in the last 48 hours from the time that you started feeling like you had symptoms? So if on Friday, you started feeling like you had symptoms, and you tell your supervisor on Sunday, well, we need to know who you had in contact with on Wednesday, Thursday. So within 48 hours of the time your symptoms may have started, the supervisor would ask about who you were in contact with, and if you were within six feet for more than 15 minutes of any individual. If all of us were together in space, but, uh, I was only in close contact with Dr. Wickman for, within six feet for more than 15 minutes, Dr. Wickman would be the only one of the entire group here that would need to be notifying that he may have been in contact with someone with COVID-19. Because the rest of us weren't meeting the threshold. We were maintaining distancing, we worked together for more than 15 minutes. So we would not meet the CDC's definition of close contact. And that's the definition that we've been using. So the supervisor will collect that information. And we are finishing creating a link for supervisors to submit their information. Right now, uh, since the time of shutdown, we have been, uh, sending that information directly to Nurse Christine, who has been working with county office, excuse me, the Department of, the County Department of Health on every case where there's been a question. We are asking that supervisors communicate and finish that notification to us by 3:00 PM on the day that they're notified, soon as possible so we can get started. Because the sooner we communicate with an employee, the sooner that employee will know what the guidelines will be for them to come back to work. The last thing, of course, is that the supervisor will inform the employee that, um, health staff from the district or health staff from the Department of Health, from Fresno County Department of Health may be contacting them. Okay? Um, the last thing, and it's slightly cut off here, but one thing that's very important and has been very clear through all of the manuals, um, and the OSHA manual has it very specifically. While businesses are working with an employee who may have symptoms and they may need to notify other employees, the confidentiality of that employee's health information is critical. So the supervisor needs to communicate something to someone that might be exposed, like you may have been in contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19. Right? And then these are the guidelines. So no personal information can be provided, as every employee has the same protections. Um, but yet, that notification is still an expectation of CDC, California Department of Health, and OSHA. So, maintaining confidentiality. Um, the last document I wanted to show you, and it's very specific to the definitions, um, and it links to how long an employee may need to stay home. So this is our one-page sheet for an employee on, um, whether they need to self-isolate or whether they need to self-quarantine. Those, I thought quarantine would be worse, but it's actually not. When we first started this. So, based on what an employee tells a supervisor, and then the health staff in this school district communicate with that employee, they'll take this sheet. And for example, the first thing, self-isolation means that you tested positive. You have tested positive, um, you have tested positive or have symptoms suggesting COVID-19. So you now must self-isolate for 10 days. Or until you don't have a fever, for three days without the use of medication. Whichever comes first. So you could be out for longer than 10 days if for whatever reason your fever isn't breaking. We don't have three days of no fever. Um, so that is the one recommendation that we would give an employee. The second one, if you can scroll up, is self-quarantine. So self-quarantine is, if you had close contacts, which we talked about, with a person who hasn't confirmed cases of COVID-19, you must self-quarantine for 14 days. So you don't have symptoms yet, but Dr. Wickman, who was in close contact with me, he would then have to self-quarantine for 14 days. Um, because I was positive and we were in close contact. I think the silver lining of the close contact definition is that with some basic precautions about social distancing, social distancing and not being in spaces longer than 15 minutes with one another, we can make sure close contact doesn't happen. And that's, I think, um, the responsibility for all of us to keep the system going so we don't have large groups of employees that would need to self-quarantine at one time. So the 14 days, and then as you can see on here, there are actually, our health staff will give an employee a date to which they can return. So the 14 days happens, and then on this form, they will get the date when they can come back to work. And then the bottom part is where Sanger Unified Health Staff actually fill this out and send it to the health department. And then the health department has their own interest in contact. So there will be a very elaborate system in place, um, to communicate these cases and be kind of transparent about how people can keep themselves safe, keep their loved ones safe, keep their coworkers safe. But then also communicate with the health department, uh, around cases and numbers and, um, some of these measures that are going to help us make decisions about what stage a, a community or a county is in, um, which is a very high threshold for, for cases to stop. So, that's kind of been the work on, um, the employee side of creating some documents and some tools, um, that we will be using. And, um, a variety of health staff, um, licensed vocational nurses and nurses will be a part of this system, um, to help the district move forward on this. Questions?
Scenario, what are the scenario under some supervisor hides out? What, what would take place in that movement that will be that department would be asking? How soon would you take this?
So we, so when we have had to have that conversation, um, the supervisor worked, of course, with the employee to have the employee go home. Um, the supervisor then communicated with me, and I communicated with Mr. Kilby, um, and custodial services around getting into those spaces and fogging or sanitizing those spaces so then the, the employees can continue working in the space. If there is a case that is warranting that kind of, um, response, we have been able to do that immediately. And, and so, just for the health and, um, putting people's ease, uh, putting people's mind at ease around their workspaces, that's worked very well. Um, of course, all the personal protective equipment that the district has purchased and made available to everyone as well, with expectations of its use, um, are also things that I think are, are helping people's, um, just feel more comfortable in their workspaces.
Do you feel the contact, are people comfortable walking?
I, I think being isolated for as long as people were those first few times out and about again, were difficult or stressful. And, you know, to come back out and get yourself back into some routines, I think that has been a challenge. Um, fortunately, as people walked straight into their spaces, they were given the equipment that they needed to put their mind at ease as much as they could. Um, but, but it's definitely been stressful.
And that's why as employees return, um, you know, trying to educate them, making sure that they're aware of everything and, um, making sure the posters are up. And how do we define that close contact and what does that mean? How do we protect ourselves? And, um, so, so educating and I think just making sure that we're very informed about to help put that at ease, to help put them, their minds at ease.
I think also just to keep in mind, and when we started to serve the food, we did have a lot of volunteers. And similar to what's going on within our area, the state, and the country, or the whole world, everybody's going to process very differently in how they feel. Their own life and their own environments allow them to perhaps engage. But we've had also departments who say, we're ready to come back, we need to come back. While others are mitigating their own circumstances through Dr. Dennis Wickman. Uh, so it could be a mixed reaction of how to engage, uh, into what we used to classify as a normal work environment.
I know we had a committee going on all, all of the years. I know we had a committee that was going on and working together and making contact almost daily. We shop at the place or something like that. Is that committee going to continue because I know there's going to be a lot of, of concern about opening up?
Yeah. So as we're working through the plan, then we will reconvene the committee to make sure that there are, um, the right people, you know, on the committee to have those frequent updates. And every once in a while, we still reconvene them if there's a need. We'll have a, we have a standing 3:30 time that they know that if we need to meet and to update with them, with anything, then we do that.
And because I, because I know there's some concerns, because I know tonight we had a parent who said that, having children have to wear masks, the parents concerned about that. And the plexiglass and all that stuff like that. But also, we have the deep concern of our teachers. We want to make sure our teachers are safe and our classified personnel are safe. So we're going to have to have some really deep thought on things like, uh, how are we going to keep our personnel safe and keep parents happy about their children also? You know, as far as getting education and like that, it's going to be, it's going to require a lot of thought. And on your committee, you have some teachers, you have some classified personnel who can express how they feel.
And, and the guidelines that I mentioned earlier, the three documents that we have, address that. So we look through that and make sure that what are the recommendations from the CDC and the Department of Public Health, both county and state, in regards to, um, employee safety.
I look forward to hearing more about those, that both you have on the state. Like you said, you were halfway through.
I will share that with you. Yeah, it's, it's a public document on the California Department of Education, um, website, but I will email all of you a copy of that.
You can summarize it.
Okay. You don't want the 65-page document.
No, but like I said, you know, it's going to be a hard balance, the balance of what the needs of the children are and what the needs of our, our employees. It's going to be a hard balance.
I was going to say, one of the things also, as we were, um, coming back, the cleaning schedules, as Mr. Kilby went through, uh, multiple times a day and everything being fogged every evening. Um, and so that process actually has been ongoing since the shutdown, uh, with the fogging where the, um, individuals were, but that has been ramped up as, we have gotten back into more of a normal schedule.
It's going to be interesting because in the fogging, you know, this person who does the fogging, people that do the cleanup, they're going to be very, very important people. People are going to have to trust them that they're out there and they're doing the right thing.
And then I can give a, Ryan Kilby actually done fogging, fogging stuff for the rest of the year, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
On the, uh, you know, you have to send them home immediately. But we also have another option, I didn't see in the sign, as you have, we have the highest testing, well, highest testing places in the county here. Cause we have the community center, county has the free testing there. So, I know where I work, when we send them home, we send them immediately to testing. And if they get tested and cleared three days later, the waiting period is over.
And that's, that's a great point about getting back to work faster, potentially. Um, the school district consensus had been that, you know, we cannot make someone go get tested. We can highly recommend it and we can let them know that if they were to get tested and their test results were to come back, you know, the, the 10-day or the 14-day would be much, much shorter if they have the results. Um, and so there have been instances where, um, that's been communicated as well. Um, but we felt like at least in our documents, we couldn't mandate someone go do anything. The health department can.
They will.
You know, and they'll do it. Um, and we're letting them know that as well, that, you know, when you get the call, um, the health department is probably going to say, you need to go test. Um, but we didn't feel like in our documents, we could say, this is a mandate, so.
But, but we don't say that if you test and it's negative, you know, that you quarantine for two weeks.
We are telling them that. We are telling them that, that if you bring back your negative test results, right, then, then there's no need to continue quarantining or self-isolating, yeah.
Do you see, like, because you've seen in the meeting all the time where they close a building down, they close it down, and you, you know, walk the whole way down. Do you see scenarios like that? What would that scenario, what would it take for somebody, you know, for a department to go?
So the guidelines thus far have been very specific to individual-to-individual contact. Um, that said, the close contact issue, right? And if you were to have a positive case, much like we've done, um, would be recommending to evacuate the space and take advantage of sanitation, sanitizing practices that are actually pretty efficient. They're very quick, um, all things considered. It's not like you're scrubbing every surface and then, and some of those things. Um, so there is the ability to come into a space and do the sanitizing practices as we have been. Um, and then, you know, allow people back in the space and allow them to be confident that the space is safe.
Thank you very much. I wish there were more people here who have heard that. Clean down right before we turn the house down. Is that information, was it, was it part of the, it was a, it's all of them we meet on Monday, I'd like to have a talk with you.
Just a comment and then a, uh, one or two questions at the end of my comment. The Fresno County Department of Health releases its, uh, statistics on COVID-19 dating. And if you look at the breakdown by geography, uh, Sanger is, I believe, third or one of the highest, uh, and continues to be that. Yes, it is misleading if you look at the geography of what the county puts it at Sanger. It extends beyond the jurisdiction of the city of Sanger. But if you overlap that map with the school district's map, it's very comparable to Sanger Unified School District's map. And so the numbers, uh, reported as Sanger numbers, it's very close to Sanger Unified's, uh, territory. And my, uh, question is, has there been a Sanger Unified employee who has tested positive for COVID-19 in the past? And so how many, without divulging any, uh, personal information?
With the number of, with a community of 25,000 and with the number of employees that are employed by the district, the numbers are in favor of that. Um, we have worked with, with supervisors to walk through these steps, kind of as we've talked about today. Um, and this is the procedure we'll continue to do. Um, so, Sanger residents, working for Sanger Unified, um, you know, that's, this is going to just become our new norm. And so to have just a really basic set of, a supervisor follows one through five, gets that employee to a space where they're taking care of themselves, they're taking care of their family, and then moving forward. And then we as a district are of course taking care of our spaces as well. Um, that seems to be something that every district is going to have to have procedures for, so.
We have this reporting procedure in place for our employees now. And again, going back to my question, has there been a Sanger Unified employee who has been tested and that test, uh, was positive for COVID-19?
We've had Sanger residents that are, we have the district test and worked through that with county office, or with Department of Health and have moved through, so.
What about volunteers? I know that the procedure in place here is for employees only, correct? What if this happens to a volunteer? Uh, do we have a procedure in place or are we going to use this procedure, uh, with regards to a volunteer that?
So these guidelines are the, are just straight from the Department of Health guidelines for any individual. So it does seem like this would hold, um, and would be if, an appropriately conservative threshold. and would be an appropriately conservative threshold for any individual in one of our spaces that is self-certifying, that they have some symptom, and someone responsible for that space who is a district, who has the authority from the district over that space, would give that person the same guidance. If it's not an employee, however, we are not inclined to take the records on that person. You know, we would recommend that they leave our space and that they seek, you know, medical attention. But we would not take any personal information from a community member or something like that. Because we wouldn't, we're only taking it to make that decision about self-quarantine or self-isolation for the purpose of then coming back to work. That's why we are collecting the information. Thank you. Any other questions?
There's just like another scenario. A parent came in, okay, and was in our office. And then they went home. A couple of days later, they found out that they had, they called back to us, tell us that they were positive. We would just go by the guy next door and say, oh, oh, when you closed the server.
Right. The 48 hours prior to the beginning of symptoms. So if someone was in one of our spaces, they happened to communicate that with us, I mean, I think that's, that's very selfless of them if they were to come back and communicate, you know, I tested positive, wanted to let you know. We would respond in a similar way about sanitizing practices to protect the space and need to make decisions about, was anyone in close contact with that person that did say they tested positive? To make a decision about self-isolation or self-quarantine for those district employees that may have had contact with that person.
Jason, these conversations made me think because I'm, you know, born and bred volunteer. If a volunteer came to, because we're, Sanger Unified is very fortunate to have many parents and relatives come and volunteer, would they be screened at all before they were allowed on campus?
So self-certifying is something that is happening in many, many spaces. That is, I think, one of our next steps now that we're starting to get some procedures in place for our employees, is what, what will the volunteer procedures be? But self-certification is something that is kind of the cornerstone of all of these practices and the way the Department of Health is, has rolled them out. So how we ask people about those things. And the procedure for that, we'll have to work through that.
Okay. I'm just curious. I, yeah, I'm just curious. Thank you.
I have a question. You know, we're fogging in tight for the buildings that are being in use. And when we went through the, that other, anyway.
SARS.
The SARS. We were doing that also. And it was once a night. And we had one supervisor, first school, going through in spring. So we'll continue that.
That sounds like that's the expectation, yeah. No, no change in the schedule at this point. If a space is used by individuals through the day, that space is on the list for sanitizing. Anything else? Thank you.